Oh, no. Well, that's very scary. Yeah. Oh, no. I didn't want to get in trouble. We'll fix something else, sir. Too long. Three. I had to say that, like, I would like to go because I knew that. I'm not that lucky. It's like, I'm not that lucky. Thanks on the two pages. Are you nervous about her? Yes. You guys know this is a very important event again today. Thank you so much for coming. Yeah. It's good to be here. Yeah. Hey, a lot of travels in the place, but um, I was in Vegas last week, which Vegas. No, I know. I've never really had that before. No, me neither. And I wouldn't have gone if they didn't need it, but we're preaching, you know? Somebody would have given you that big shot. Um, but uh, other than that, I couldn't wait today. I mean, I was just thinking, oh, it's mad, I'm always trashing people. Yeah. Yeah. It's like this layer. Okay, that's what you made. I forgot how beautiful the mountain is. Really beautiful surrounding us. Yeah. I imagine a lot of people are going to make their way to the mountain. Yeah. Are you coming with the local? I want to hear what's going on. Yeah, that and everything else. Um, I, I mean, they act to, to get. I mean, like, I haven't promised you reasons to, to find this side for, like, a couple of Bible hanging or et cetera, like, going on.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. If you have your attention, please. Thank y'all for coming. We appreciate you being here. Um, glad to see everybody out, uh, and glad to get your aid and have your voices heard, and we appreciate that. I appreciate y'all being here. Uh, this, uh, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Yancey County Board of Commissioners' Regular Business Meeting for April the 14th, uh, 2025, uh, and I've asked Commissioner Leffler if he would to lead us to our vacation, and Commissioner Green will, uh, lead us in the pledge, uh, to the flag. So, if you will mark it right now.
Let's pray. Dear Father God, we just thank you, Lord, for, uh, this beautiful day, Lord, that you've given us, and we're here to conduct the business of Yancey County. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity that we have, Lord, uh, Lady Yancey County here, God, we just ask that you would be with each and every one of us, and with each and every person in this room, and we just ask that you would help us, where as we make decisions, know that we would make decisions, God, that you would, uh, that would argue, and we thank you, Lord, for all that you do for us.
(Music) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks very much. For all, for all. Next is the approval of the agenda, but I would like to, um, present a motion that we amend the agenda to move out of number eight up to out of number five, uh, because that's our department update, Mr. Brandon Price, he has a, another engagement, so we're going to let him speak before our tax administrator, so he can get out and go to the next appointment in Rupert County. And then also, I would like to, uh, if we could, uh, go into closed session for, uh, economic development, Oklahoma statute 143-3810.18, uh, with a couple of, uh, economic things that we need to do with thrive and another group, uh, so, if we could, with that, I would like to entertain a motion that, uh, someone entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Here you now, opposed motion carries. The consent agenda, we have several items on the consent agenda for this month, the approval of the March 10th, 2025 rate of meetings, approval of road naming request Belton Horse Drive, approval of road naming request Black Dog Trail, approval of road naming request Garnet Drive, approval of loan agreement that's the Oklahoma Department of State Treasurer, approval of the resolution authorizing the, uh, execution and delivery of an installment contract to finance the acquisition and equipping of certain motor vehicles of Yancey County, uh, something that we always do, approval of the resolution of the Yancey County Board of Commissioners declaring the, uh, Internet of Yancy County, uh, the intent of Yancy County to reimburse itself for expenditures incurred in connection with the purchase of motor vehicles from the preceding proceeds of obligations to the, to be executed and delivered in fiscal year 2025, approval of tax rules adjustments 2025, and in March 2025, tax laws and courts have huge work for informational purposes only. Do I hear any discussion about any of these items or an approval?
What's approved?
I hear a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Here you now, opposed motion carries. Thank you for that. Next is, uh, our department update, Mr. Brandon Price, our emergency management director. Uh, here comes Brandon. Brandon, thank you for being here, for what you're doing, the great job.
Thank you for having me.
Uh, for those of you who have not met our new, uh, emergency manager, Mr. Brandon Price, very certified and capable, uh, gentleman for the job, so thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. Thank y'all for letting us serve you, all of your emergency management director, and also your partner also. Um, so a couple updates, uh, with EM, we're getting to work with SCR, um, in reference to the railroad debris removals, kind of helping through take over CDM and, and help them out of their own way. Um, I've hired additional staff, they don't think I've got big shoes up there with the EM and the fire marshal, so we got a local gentleman, Rory Leffler, um, is my assistant, um, and me and him are currently working on updating emergency operation SAGs and SOPs with county. As we know, they're just going to change a little bit from the storm and everything we have, we're trying to get them updated so we can stay on top of that. Um, we're also working on fixing the damage to our N91 tower sites, I was from Helene, um, those are FEMA projects that they're working with us on. Um, most importantly, I'm looking at creating a countywide CERT team, which is a community emergency response team, um, it's made up of volunteers of the community, um, to which we give a little bit of training on first aid, um, care and staff and stuff like that, and they can be utilized in emergencies. Um, so we're looking on doing that. The resilience of this community is outstanding, and I want to, I want to build upon that and focus on that, so that's what we're going to do with the CERT team, uh, that's be a volunteer team. Um, we're also, we're looking at creating the countywide slip water rescue team, um, which will be composed of the volunteer fire departments, uh, the EM, the fire marshal, the sheriff's office, um, and EMS rescue squad. Um, you know, we've got a lot of water in this county, so we're looking at which way we can do to protect our citizens, we're looking at that moving forward. Um, with that, we have this slip water boat that has been donated to the county, a brand new, uh, three point eight liter slip water boat that was donated to the county, um, and we're currently looking at, um, some grant funding, try to put some trailer and motor for that, um, with some emergency preparedness grants. Um, going forward, um, the EM, the EM department and fire marshal department will be, uh, hosting a aviation pool in the area, um, prior airport, Mountain Air, uh, all the fire departments will be cooperating with that, EMS, uh, law enforcement and such, um, we're doing that upon a grant that was awarded, um, emergency preparedness grant that was awarded to, uh, Yancey County, uh, that we'll be funding all that scenario. Um, as far as fire marshals, they, um, I was made the fire marshal a couple weeks ago, um, uh, Mr. Curry has decided he wants to retire, so, um, I'm honored to be able to take on that position too, I come from a long throwing fire background, uh, investigation background and that. Um, so, I'm working with the N91 director, um, on that in response for the calls for the fire marshal, for the emergency management director. We're also working on updating the investigation portion as well as the fire inspection portion, uh, which is, uh, creating policies and guidelines such as that for those two departments. Um, currently, we're working with all the fire departments in the county, the systems, manpower, instance, we're a volunteer driven county with fire departments, and as everybody knows, a lot of people have some damage, people have to work, so, um, we're doing everything we can, our power to build the systems, manpower when needed. Um, other than that, we're looking from, looking to apply for grants for equipment for the fire departments, uh, for the fire marshal office, um, and provide training, we're going to train at our local community college, um, just to get a basket for, and keep us moving forward. That's all I have.
And also, uh, still folks, what, what do you think about building all the fire departments?
Yeah, um, currently, um, we're going to all the fire departments and feed them. Um, I'm a fireman of heart, I was a fireman for 29 years, and, uh, you make a fireman happy about getting a belly full of his or her belly full, and you give them a thank you, you know, that goes a long way. So, we're doing that, we're presenting them with a, uh, certificate of commendation for their efforts, everything they did in the storm and response, and for them to suffer. Um, uh, that's an initiative, a little bit, we can say thank you with it.
Well, we realize that, uh, uh, the backbone of Yancey County during the storm and throughout the storm was our, our local fire departments, and every single community done a tremendous job in supporting each community as well as other communities. And they, they didn't just stay in house, they kind of reached out all over the county, and we just wanted to celebrate.
Excellent job. But the results I've had, it looks like y'all have, hurricane, y'all been through twenty of them, the way this community responded to this event, it's phenomenal. I come from the coast, where we have hurricanes several each year, the night counting, and it does not run as smoothly as spring. I've been in house, so, uh, my hat's off to you, you're phenomenal, y'all.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next on the agenda is Mr. Danny McIntosh, our interim tax, uh, administrator, looks like you've got a couple items for us, Danny. Thank you for coming, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Stan, I expect no applause when I finish this, I'm looking for taxes. And I hope y'all have a chance to look over the, uh, releases that we've accomplished this last month, and also a little brief on requests, I'd like to have questions if you have any, and if not, that's what I ask.
Well, the majority of us are sitting on the board, we understand exactly what's going on, what's been going on, and we'll continue for the next several, several weeks, but thank you.
If we're, absolutely.
Any, any questions for Danny?
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you. Appreciate it. There's nobody more deserving than I have up there first watch. Thank you, Danny. Uh, do we need to take action on these, uh, to approve? So, do I hear a, have a motion to approve, a second, and a second. All those in favor say aye. Here you now, opposed motion carries. All right. Next on the agenda, uh, Susan, there she is, I looked right over you, Susan, Miss Susan Joe, she's our register of deeds, and she's got, uh, something to bring to us. Good evening, ma'am, thanks for coming.
I'm sitting home, and I'm so happy, I'm an entrepreneur, I'm a charity, and I'm here on a very important matter. Can you guys hear me? I'm short. There we go. So, I'm here on a very important matter, um, I have been pushing for over two years, trying to get the bill, and our registered deeds are always really using a program to be able to issue certified certificates to our adoptees. As of right now, they have to go to Raleigh, and it's very expensive, and it takes a long time to get them. So, we finally got a bill, so excited about that. So, we're just trying to make sure that we have our legislative folks informed so that we can get this bill passed. And I have presented the resolution, I don't know if y'all have a chance to look at it, but basically, it's, um, in support of the registered deeds being able to issue certified certificates to our adoptees. And if we get the bill passed, then we'll be able to issue them at a much more reasonable cost as we did for other folks. For example, if you're born out of county, and say in North Carolina, then the cost is $24, then it's maybe, you get it right away. And adoptees don't have that luxury. It takes to get certain days, and it's very expensive.
I love, bless you, Chris.
A trip to Raleigh, and if you drive out to Raleigh, you have time in front of it, those are three weeks out, they charge you an extra, walking free, you don't have to pay $24. So, it's expensive, it's tough to do, and this is something for our adoptees. I appreciate it, if y'all can support us on that. And all registers have asked their commissioners to support them, um, with the resolution, and just trying to get our legislative folks informed, so it doesn't affect the field.
Well, have, have we already drafted the resolution, or are we going to put it in draft? Have you got a template that you can?
I do have a template.
Well, do I hear, do I hear a motion that we, uh, elected, so we have a motion to approve and, uh, draft? And a second, all those in favor say aye. I hear you now, opposed motion carries, we will get that to you. We will get it done. No, thank you, appreciate all that you do, thank you, and, and congratulations on the victory in the fight, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
That's good. All right. And next on the, next on the agenda is, uh, Deve Andrews, the Town River Arts Council Executive Director, wish she had a sentence. Ms. Diamond, Deve, appreciate you being here.
Hey, everybody, I hope you can hear me, I'm short also, but I wore some taller shoes today, so, um, just a quick thank you to Lynn, commissioners, for giving me a moment to speak and update you about the arts, what's going on regionally, locally, and at the state and federal level. So, um, I'm gonna try to keep this short, as you know, there's so much we can say, but there's pretty many points, and the first that I want to make is talking about the economic impact to our community, uh, by the arts, especially in rural areas like this. So, North Carolina's nonprofit arts and culture industry contributed $2.23 billion to economic activity in North Carolina in 2022. Of that $2 billion, 80 million of that have been right here in western North Carolina. So, as you're thinking about tourism and building back, please consider the arts in that conversation. Um, furthermore, rural communities that have performing arts and arts businesses attract more workers and jobs, provide a higher income, and recover quicker from recessions. Children from low-income families are five times more likely to graduate from high school and twice as likely to graduate from college if they participate in the arts. So, please consider the arts in your conversations. Um, another point, just quickly, I know we've, we're all talking about Helene, but I want to talk to you all briefly about how it impacted our arts community. So, you all know we have one of the highest, um, number of artists repented in the country. Our artists are reeling from the devastating effects of Hurricane Helene, like everyone, they've lost loved ones, property, revenue, and a sense of security. Support has come from our regional, state, and federal level partners and from private donors. Um, Town River Arts believes that supporting our artist community is incredibly important, so, a week after the storm, we launched our Disaster Recovery Fund for the joint Yancey artists, raised over $126,000, and supported 102 artists in three galleries in the joint Yancey County Salon. Arts ABL awarded 1,500 grants to artists who win more than $750,000 in western North Carolina. Other businesses and partners like Glenn Raven have worked with us and other artists directly to create market base off the mountain events, or to acquire gifts directly from our artist community. Other organizations include Craft Your Commerce, South Plus Center for Craft, and then the Street's My Daughter's Market. The reason why I'm making that point is because we have yet to see any direct relief for the arts from the state legislature in North Carolina. Um, we have all brought our resources, we've all worked together to support our artist community, and we've seen it, um, in our rural communities, but we still have yet to get any direct arts relief from the state legislature, and I think that's an important thing for representatives to hear. Um, just a brief update on Town River Arts, for those of you who don't know, North Carolina thankfully has one of the strongest arts council networks in the country. I think that's why, um, there are certain things that haven't affected us as much as some other states. Uh, our network is very close, um, and far-reaching. We're the only arts council in North Carolina to serve two counties, the joint Yancey, um, and you all know they're very different counties. So, um, upcoming this year, we're gonna host more than 10 exhibitions in our Street's Time location, and I say that because we have this future hope, hopefully, happening on the town square, um, where we hope to rotate our exhibitions every five weeks. So, that's something that's gonna be constantly changing and bringing in new art for our local community, um, and also featuring the local artist community in that exhibition space as well. Um, we continue to operate our downtown principal location, highlighting and selling the artwork of more than 150 local artists. Um, some of our youth programming's on hold because of the storm. Uh, we, for those of you who don't know, we have an artist residency program in Yancey County schools. Um, we try to reach every elementary-aged child through an artist residency, so they're making clay or glass in their classroom. Those programs are on hold right now, um, we hope to continue them in the fall. Um, one program that has started back up, you all may not know, but we offer free banjo, fiddle, and guitar lessons to, uh, middle schoolers in both counties, so they don't even have to have an instrument, we provide the instrument, we provide the free lessons, they just have to show up. So, those classes have started again in Yancey County. Thank y'all for your patience, it's great. Um, and we recently boosted our Yancey County Student Showcase, so that is an exhibition of student work K through 12, um, whether they're in school or in the public school system can exhibit their artwork, and that's a partnership with the Yancey County Public Library, um, and we hope that will continue. Um, we'll have to start first, studio tours that Hurricane Helene this June, it's gonna feature more than 85 artists in eight galleries, with at least 10 new artists and galleries participating. So, our community's still growing despite everything that's happened. There are a lot of artists leaving the artists of the actual area, we're trying to prevent that from happening, we need our artists to stay because they contribute so much to our community. Um, next year, we're gonna be celebrating our 50th anniversary, so, um, there's gonna be lots of new and diverse programming, and we're hoping to start that year with a retrospective exhibition that hopefully will open in the library space. Um, so, in closing, the only thing that I want to say is, please don't forget our creative and artist community as we're talking about rebuilding and building back. Um, the arts contribute to tourism, but they also contribute to the mental health and well-being of our youth and really our entire community, so please don't forget about us as you're having these conversations. Yeah, the old library's face on the town square, thank you, Lynn, so, yeah, thank you.
Well, is there, is there a way that we can, um, if you could draft some kind of a resolution, just like, uh, Susan did with that, uh, showing support that you can send to Raleigh?
Sure, I actually would love that, because there was, um, an organized ask to the state legislature by the arts caucus members for $10 million in relief aid, and it has yet to be passed.
I mean, it's a vital part of, of Yancey and Yancey County.
That would be phenomenal if you all could do that for us, absolutely.
If you could get us something, I think we would all be in agreement to, to support that and get it to Raleigh.
Okay, thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
And the next on the, next on the agenda is, uh, a board report from the Yancey County Department of Social Services, there was a board member, uh, that had to come off early, uh, so this would be to fill, uh, fill the remainder of that term, and, uh, is there any nominations, any discussions, anything that we would like to talk about this, uh, since Mr. Gary Banks is coming off, and we need to fill that, uh, his term out. And, and, and does it, my question is, does it have to be, uh, because it, it happened pretty, pretty sudden, and we've not had an opportunity to talk or ask anybody, and we can make nominations and ask that way, but.
You can table it until next month. I think it's better, I'm waiting, someone will just follow back.
Okay, so, well then, I would suggest that we table this until next month, we can find at least a couple that we can vote on.
I vote February 2nd.
Okay, we have a motion February 2nd, and a second, all those in favor say aye. I hear you now, opposed motion carries, we'll move that until next month. Uh, next, uh, our CB, our CDVG, uh, program compliance requirements, uh, there's a few things here, uh, who's gonna be the representative speaking on that?
Michelle.
Okay, here she is, yep, from our high country.
Yep.
Thank you, Michelle, for being here, making the trip, thank you for that.
Just wanted to kind of remind you what happened, it's been a while, last October, y'all could didn't agree to put in an application, we were working on an application for a housing repair grant.
This is exciting stuff, by the way, yeah.
And, uh, for, it was for $950,000, the county decided that, it was due at, right after the hurricane hit, so, the state put in a little extra money and offered, uh, offered some more so we, the last time I was here, uh, it was a public hearing saying we were gonna, uh, buy 2 million instead of the 950. Well, I happened to get a call about three weeks later from, uh, John Brooks, who was head of that department at Department of Commerce, and I thought I had just something really wrong with the application, and I was scared. He goes, now, he says, um, are you sure two million's gonna be enough? And I said, that's not a question for me to answer, you need to talk to Lynn. So, a long story short, we could use double, we got 4 million, the county got 4 million, so, that money is gonna be able to replace about 20 homes, we're gonna try to do as many as we can, but we think we could do 20, and that is replacing, we're still working on, it'll probably be like double, it's a perfect foundation, and that includes like everything, grading, well set to gravel, anything that has to do with getting that person in the house. Um, last week, the selection committee met, and, because we have to do, we've been taking applications for months, and, uh, the selection committee selected 20 homes and six alternates. Of those alternates and, uh, and, and participants, there's 10 of them, they're actually, either the homes are gone, or they're displaced, or the home is not available. So, those, we will have to actually relocate those people to another place, um, but, you know, that's something we've never done before with any of these projects, and this is, this is, usually when I do these projects, it's five, six people, so 20, you know, that's almost four times as many as we normally do. So, it's gonna be, Morgan is gonna have a big job.
And that's just in one county?
That's just in one county, yeah.
Greg, what?
It is, it is, and, and it just happened, you all were getting that, you're doing it anyway, I, in this cycle, nobody else got this much money, I think one other county got about a million, Yancey County down four. And, yeah, so, I'm working now to get the funds, uh, released, we expect, and hopefully to have them released, ready to spend in the fall. CDVG, uh, is a monster, when you're, there's a lot of work to it, but it's worth it because it does a lot, and there's no, usually, or there's rarely any match that the county has to do, so it usually is, it's a true grant, even though they did call it a loan in the first place, so. But, part of that is, uh, what you've got on your agenda here, of these, uh, compliance requirements, and I don't know how you want to do it, you can either, I can go through each one and adopt them, you've done them before in the past.
Yeah, this is, I understand it, I've read it. If you want to, and she'll just go over them, and then we'll do it all at one time, if that's good.
I'll do it real quick, because there's, there's, there is a couple that I will be bringing back next, next meeting, because I, I do have to come back next.
But everybody, yeah, there's several.
Yeah, uh, there is an ADA grievance procedure, which has handicap accessibility, there's a grievance procedure for that, uh, the, call it the Section 3 Plan, it states that people, uh, that, the CD, CDVG recipient, which is the county, will make good faith efforts to fill needed positions for construction projects with low, moderate income, local residents, uh, there's a code of conduct assuring that no member of the local government or body, uh, or anybody in decision-making will, uh, profit from a project. Um, this residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan, we have to have that for everything, it's usually, I would say, this is the EOC policy, this is usually when you're coming in and doing a road, and you're, uh, having effects on this house, and you have to relocate them. We're relocating people voluntarily anyway, so that, there, this policy is in, and it still applies, but we're not forcibly relocating people, these are all voluntary, voluntary. Uh, there's optional coverage relocation plan, that states what we, what the county can do, and, um, when they do the relo, you know, to relocate someone, it's about a 15-page plan if you relocate, it'd be really good, it's an, it's an alternate, uh, it's, it's explaining the relocation policy. Um, a citizen participation plan, I'll tell you that, that one was adopted back when we did the application, so we don't have to do that one. Uh, there's an equal employ, equal employment and procurement plan, it assures that CDV recipients will not discriminate on the basis of religion, race, sex, gender, creed. sex, gender, when they're hiring employees. Complaint procedure, there's a complaint procedure for citizens if they do want, they have any complaints against either the application process or during, if they do participate, there's a hierarchy that they need to go through. There's a language access plan. So if we have any people limited English proficiency, that, you know, it's on, the county has to find translators or to translate stuff to them. I rarely have a request for that, but there's procedures in it. That's a procedure. Fair Housing Plan, there's a complaint procedure in the plan in this. And with CBG funds, we have to do fair housing activities. And it's a lot of times advertising, providing brochures, information about fair housing to the public. And there is, there will be a fair housing analysis of impediments. It's a study that I have to do, it's a short study. I will bring that back at the next meeting. But that's, I think that's the whole list. Did you took off?
This with any community development block grant that we've done, we have to do this protocol. This is sort of standard. There's a couple of things that I saw here that's a little bit custom because of the circumstances, I'm sure. But the vast majority of this is what we normally do anyway. So with that being said, any discussion?
There is an agreement, I just want to make you aware, there's an agreement, you know, with the High Country Council of Government. Morgan's tackled it under Michelle's supervision. Michelle's helped a lot, and they've kind of patented it since it is a big application, and it's Morgan's first time doing it. It's Michelle's 15th time doing it, probably. She's done it 100 times.
And I just, I have a smaller, I used to do everything with these grants, from writing the application to closing it. I did everything but pick up the hammer. And now, the money went away, now it's coming back, but my job changed. So now, all I can offer is my expertise in the CBG part of it, the compliance, keeping you all in line, making sure that you have all these resolutions, you have this stuff done. I do the fair housing, I do the reporting. And also help, you know, I'm available anytime that Morgan needs any help. And do a little bit of training too, going into that, going, procurement and stuff like that. But it's not like, I wish...
It's a lot of home visits. Morgan's went out and visited everyone. There's a whole process for this. It's not just throw a dart and see who gets to go, you know. It's a whole, big process of meeting the different income levels and everything.
Part of it, well, and I was going to go through those in a minute, the ones I went through before all the procedures, K, L, N, and M are part, we have a, there's a funding agreement with the county finance, and it's part of the funding conditions. And all of these on it. The agreement with High Country Council of Government, or to do an admin, you have to have, and you have to have an experienced CBG administrator. So you've got to do a letter, say you want one. That is number L on here. Two new things that have come up with these projects is the BABA, Build America, Buy America Act. And we have to agree to adhere to that with this program. And then the other is a work right-up condition letter, and that's basically, when we bid each one of these out, we have to, we do a couple of work, work right up. And the state wants us to send that in to them. I don't know if they have to approve it, or if they just want us to get it.
And of course, all of these are licensed, certified.
These are all going to be, as far as I know, these are all going to be manufactured home replacements. They're all replacements. We're not working, we're not doing any rehabs. And so, yeah. But it could be somebody on Ashville, it could be at Burnsville. We have to bid that out to get a fair, to give every, to give fair and open competition.
Do you understand that? All right, any more questions, from Sid? I hear a motion to approve the resolution along with the compliance requirement. Go ahead, motion. Do I hear a second? And two seconds. Not opposed, you can take your pick. All those in favor, say aye. Any non opposed, motion.
And I'll be back next minute with the public hearing, because we're going to have to end the project.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, next on the agenda is our county manager's report. She has several things to talk to us about. And this is the biggest reason why the vast majority of y'all are here. And we do appreciate you being here, and I say that only. Thank you for that. But we need to be respectful. Thank you so much for everything that you've done so far, but we need to be respectful of everybody's time and allow Lynn to give this presentation on all four items. But thank you, Lynn, for what you've done and your diligence in getting all this stuff done. Thank you.
Sure. Goodness, do it without Donnie. I appreciate Donnie and the other county managers and county attorneys, county manager, county attorney too, for working on this contract. First off, though, A, is the US Tire Recycling Contract. That's something new that just hit our office in the last couple of weeks. There again, we don't do that service for ourselves, so we're relying on someone else to tell us how much we have to pay for haul fee and bill fee and all that. So currently, we are with the US Tire Recycling. And as you guys know from the blood, we've had a lot of tires out the mound. So right now, we pay on $1,319.50, so $1,319.50 per load. There's about 11 and a half tons on each load. They are wanting to bill us now by the load, by the ton, and that would be $208.08 per ton. So this will raise the rate pretty drastically over the course of a year. We've done the math, and it'll raise it around $30,000 a year if we keep the same tonnage. We have tried to go out and give another company's estimate. We're waiting on that before we really approve this. So let's hold off. This is kind of a one-and-done where we're at now with our current carrier, US Tire, but we'd like to have something to compare that to and give another cost. Because we want, of course, to try to give the best spending of our money as we can, and that does make a big difference, especially with a lot of tires that we have. So if you don't care, let's hold off. This can even go on a budget discussion, because we have started the budget process in our finance office, and that'll come up toward the end of the week, or end of the month. So now, what everybody's been waiting on, after the meeting, I did have some bullet points here that you can come up and pick up, just of this summary of the withdrawal agreement. Donnie and myself, along with all the other counties' attorneys, Mitchell and Avery's, and their county manager, and also the town attorney of Spruce Pine, and one of the councilmen there. And we all agreed on this contract. Donnie drew it up, they had input, had some things they wanted us to adjust, or some, put some things to put in there. So anyway, we made those, Donnie made those adjustments, and those have been sent out and for approval all this month in the meetings. So the first page, as you see, this is the withdrawal agreement. And as we go through here, it's just a regular withdrawal agreement, nothing particular. So the main things we'll focus on is exhibits. Amber did a collections report. She did everything that she had in the library book-wise. And anything older than five years has depreciated off the books. So anything five years or newer has value to it. That value was $26,641.16 in the report that she sent us, an Excel spreadsheet, 202 41111. So all that will come and stay with the library. All the other counties and the town council has agreed that that stays within the Yancey County Library. That was around 32,000 books and audiobooks of collection. So it was 26,641. I know there've been some rumors about a million dollars or whatever, but that's what it came down to, that she had given us. Exhibit B is all the fixed assets. So anything in the room, the table, the chairs, the podiums, the televisions, whatever. Also, the computer lab would stay, everything in the building would stay. I did get notice today from Wayne that there was a few items in the library, around four or five pictures or paintings in the library that is, was donated by certain organizations and that they belong to them. So we'll make sure that that gets changed on here, Wayne, and I have gave that to our attorney. So thank you for that.
We can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
So he was just saying that we would not need to modify the agreement in any way, that it's only for interest, that Yancey County has interest in those products. If we did not provide those, or have any kind of financial obligations in on that, then that would not be, because they are donated, so they are actually still whoever donated them, they're the owners. But we're aware of that, we thank you, Wayne, on that, so we know for sure that those go back, or that they're someone else's. So this was just the TVs, the stove, microwave, refrigerator. You'll see in that what was upstairs, what was downstairs. That's in Section B, Exhibit B. It's around four or five pages worth. Exhibit C was some cash funds held on behalf of the Yancey County Public Library, and they are itemized as follows. So this was, we were kind of unaware of this when we were talking in that discussion, and Amber made us aware, and this is why it's in here as Exhibit C. There's a First Citizen Bank, the Waldrop Trust is $75,000. This is for Special Projects and Materials Fund. There's a North Carolina Capital Management Trust, there's the Makota Reinhardt, I may not say that right, and I apologize, the State. $92,760, and that's also for materials and special projects. And then the Kivit Art Studio Estate Sale was $98,662. And that is also for the Special Projects and Materials Fund. Then there's a Heron-Kivit Art Gallery. There is restricted funds on that. It is $21,000 that is restricted for use only in that gallery, the Heron-Kivit Gallery located inside the library. So, and that was from, per Amber, from the library. Then Exhibit D, you guys will notice that that is the regional office building down there, right behind the QP, right there on Brunchlesville Road. That is in Yancey County's name. The other counties has made aware of that, they know it is due to us, has been in their name. And so they still are interested in using that. So if you approve this today, that is a one-year lease, and that is at no charge to them. And some more things that we have talked about, that's all that's in this withdrawal agreement. But some more things that we have talked about is still staying in with them on the Bookmobile, still partnering on some things. And Amber agreed, and the other counties agreed. And so we plan on partner, that's not in this withdrawal agreement, because that'll be a contract from them to us, and we will partner on the Bookmobile. That's around $7,000 a year, and the other counties are interested in us still partaking in that, and we're interested as well. It has its own library that's just for the Bookmobile, it's not getting out of, resources out of each other's libraries, it's self-contained. So I would ask that, you know, we'll picture in that in the future and look for that contract from them to stay together. They do have an outreach van. We will look, and that's to pay books to people that is homebound or unable to come into the library. And we'll look at seeing about partnering with that, or with the library, or if you guys want to partner, I know our transit authority is interested in that as well. So Yancey County, we already own the Yancey County Library, of course, far as the building goes. We know it, we maintain the bills as far as any kind of, you know, heat pumps going out, or AC units, or whatever. It's on our insurance. So, and we also pay the county's match to the librarians that's up there currently, just the Yancey County side, of course, not Mitchell, or Avery, or the town of Spruce Pine. But we already are paying those health insurance benefits for them. So all that would stay the same, that wouldn't be any change there. We have three librarians we have hired. Whitney Lear is going to be our director, and she does have her Master's of Library Science. The other two, she has 14 years teaching experience, and she has had some communications with state and stuff. We are in the state cardinal system, already been accepted. We'll work with them on the next fiscal year, that'll be a fiscal, every fiscal year application. Same thing with the State Library Association. We are already in with them for this current fiscal year, this was their demonstration year, and we'll have to reapply for next year. When I asked for that appropriation of that for Yancey County, they gave me an estimate, it's just the estimate, of $97,323. So that would be funded from the state side. As far as the cardinal system goes, that's around $24.50 a year, $2,400. And what that is, is if somebody comes in and would like a book, and we don't have the book on the shelf, we can get that out of that cardinal system, because it's everybody that participates in cardinal within the state of North Carolina. And so that book would be there, you know, in the next day or two for delivery or for pickup. And then we would send that book back. So everything should stay the same. Of course, you know, we're not looking at removing anything from the library. Everything will stay where it's at. We're not going to remove any books, we're not going to remove any kind of, anything there. So, and we'll, you know, we are working on our budget currently. Me and Brandy have been working diligently on all the budget, and of course, we guys, we have a meeting with everyone next, in the next couple of weeks. So the budget is not out there. We have a good shale of a budget, but we don't have, of course, it's not been approved by you guys yet. So we're looking at doing still all the programmatic things. We're not looking at cutting anything, we're looking at growing and trying to keep things going. I think with the three full-time librarians on staff, another lady has her Master's in Library Science, and then another one is also a teacher for the last 13 years. So I think we'll be well-staffed up there, and we'll see what the growth is, if we're making additional clothes. But right now, we think that'll cover it. So any questions on that? We are not, and then just for reference, of course, we'll buy the 21,000, the restricted funds, the art gallery, all that. And then as far as that cash fund, that 600, or no, I'm sorry, $266,422 that comes with the library, and that's not including the additional 21 for the restricted funds, we will set that aside and kind of safeguard that for a rainy day fund or whatever. We're not planning on using that in this year's budget. We'll just see how this year goes, and financially, and see if we need to add more to it, take more, take away, or get more grants, or whatever. We are considered a startup library, even though the library's been there 25 plus 30, 30 by 40 years. We are considered a startup library, and so there's a lot of grant funds available for startups. So, and the state was very grateful that we were keeping the library, and that's what really meant the most to them. And a lot of folks, when I talked to Sarah Greensley at State, she was just happy that they're still going to be a librarian in Yancey County, for sure. A lot of the counties in the state of North Carolina is standing on. You know, this, we're not, she's told me that we were not reinventing the wheel, that this happens all the time. And she said, "My fact that there's another county pulling out in another location, and that when we get our paperwork done, if we send it to her, I feel like she'd pass along." So she said she'd be glad to look over it, and if we can help another county out, I'm glad, whatever the situation. So that's what I have, this is what the, I went over the withdrawal agreement plus some as far as the Bookmobile. The Bookmobile is not in this withdrawal agreement. That's going to be something separate between Yancey County Library and the Avery, Mitchell Library. So that's kind of where we stand on all this. Took a lot of work from all the attorneys, and the county managers, and the town council and stuff, so we just appreciate all their help. We get along great. So, um, that's kind of where we stand on all this. Took a lot of work from all the attorneys and the county managers and the town council and stuff, so we just appreciate all their help. Uh, we get along great, they were more than supportive, uh, of Yancey County and whatever they could do to help. So I think they're, um, they're good people, there's no problem with that, so. I would put up, uh, for a, um, motion on the withdrawal agreement, unless you guys have some questions. Any questions for me?
Make that a motion. Make that a motion, go ahead, your second.
Okay.
Second, all those people say aye?
Aye.
Here you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, darling, for all the work.
And then this three and four on my list, I'm going to let Morgan speak on those. It's the Horseshoe Highlands, the Circulus Property Bid, and also the Bill Allen Branch Road. Uh, as you guys know, we've worked through those the last couple of months, and have went back, Morgan has went back to that land, that bidder, and conveyed the message from last month's meeting, and, uh, I'll let her take a look.
So, taking this back to the original bidders, um, same property, same acreage, same everything. Um, Horseshoe Highlands, they have countered back at fifteen hundred dollars for that property. Um, they feel that that's really all they can do, and that's all it's worth. So that's, that's what I have to pass on to you for that property. Fifteen hundred is the bid. The back taxes were one thousand, seventy-six dollars and seventy-three cents.
I think the kicker from last month was the attorney's fee.
Which is around thirty-five hundred or a thousand.
Thirty-seven fifty.
Thirty-seven fifty. Uh, which, which confused to, you know, fifty, about five thousand. And we've got a fifteen hundred dollar offer, you know? And nobody else is acquiring, nobody else is putting anything, it's been out there for a while. Uh, something we need to consider, you know, if it stays and they walk away, it, it goes back on the book, so I, I, you know, it's, it's pleasure of the board, but. Make that a motion for the program.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all those people say aye? I hear none, both. We're all under. Put that thing back on the book.
Okay.
Sold, sold, sold.
Sold, sold. Number two was, again, the Bill Allen Branch property, four point seven eight acres. Um, the bid was eight thousand dollars. That was discussed before, the counter is again back at eight. Uh, offer was not, never wanted to go upon an offer.
Okay.
So that's where we stand on that.
And do you give us some background on that as well?
Yes, so, um, release on taxes is ninety-one hundred dollars, and the attorney fees were in six sixty-seven.
So that, I'm thinking that was sixteen thousand and some change.
Seventeen-ish.
Okay, seventeen.
Ten, not within taxes?
No, zero, no.
Make that a motion.
All right, we have a motion, go ahead, your second.
Second.
Second, all those people say aye?
Aye.
Hear none, both, motion carries. Sold, sold, sold.
That's all we have.
All right, thank you, ladies, appreciate that. Uh, next on the agenda is county commissioners report, any commissioners got anything to speak of, talk about? Okay, good, all right, here we go. Next, uh, on the agenda is our public comments section. Oh, I'm sorry, so sorry, I am so sorry, this was lost. Anyway, our county, our county attorney's report, go ahead, sir.
Um, we have one thing, Mr. Chairman, and I'm glad I've got registered deeds and a tax assessor here.
Yes.
Uh, what is before you is an amendment of the resolution we passed up late two months ago. I could give you some background. Mr. McIntosh had come to us and asked us to adopt a resolution, which would require a pin number and an address on documents that were recorded, which would make it easier to, for the county to keep records in the mapping department, and also assist, um, the tax department in sending out its notices and keeping good current addresses for all the properties. When I drafted the resolution, I drafted the resolution exactly what was in the statute, which actually required that pin numbers and addresses be included in all documents that were recorded in the registered deeds office. Uh, the Danny only wanted that information on maps and deeds. Of course, mortgages and deeds of trust are also recorded in the registered deeds office. And, um, I told her registered deeds, I said, well, you don't need to, to go through all of that, but, but Susan is, is very good in her job and is very diligent on following what you told her to do. So I told her I would bring the amendment back to you and ask that you sign an amended resolution, which would just require that information on maps and on deeds. Uh, so I would, you've got the amended resolution, and that's what that reads, so I would ask that you adopt the amended resolution. I'm sure Danny would still get what he wanted, and Susan would feel much better about what she's required to do.
And I think it accomplishes what we need to do, without any added costs. Do I hear a motion that we adopt the amended resolution?
Michael.
Make a motion, go ahead, your second. All those people say aye?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carried, thank you. Danny, it's been a long time coming, we finally got it, please.
We got it done, you know, and deeds of trust and cancellation and all of that doesn't help us collect taxes.
Right.
But it's good government, it's good for everybody involved. But this does walk through.
Hey, I'd just be honest with you, I'm kind of shocked that it hasn't been done, you know, decades and decades ago, but anyway, glad, glad that we got it done, so it'll make it, anybody's job to do it. Have some clarity and some understanding, a little bit, okay? Anything else as well? All right, thank you very much. All right, next on the agenda is our public comments. And as we do every single month with the public comments, lay down some ground rules, especially with the crowd this large, uh, and the, and the topics that, uh, I'm, I'm positive most everybody's going to speak about. Um, there are a few other things that the library issued on you, so thank you for that. But we have a three-minute time limit, uh, and we're going to let everybody speak, the three-minute time limit, and we're going to hold you to that three minutes. So please stay, uh, on cue to your three minutes, have respect. If you agree or disagree with the speaker, please be respectful of their time and their opinion, uh, because we're definitely respectful of everybody's opinion, and I appreciate everybody coming, and look forward to hearing from all of the people who probably got ten or twelve. Uh, so with that being said, three-minute time limits, and I will hold my hand, when three minutes is up, I'll hold, uh, three fingers up, and that's when it's time for you to wrap it up, okay? All right. Uh, the very first speaker, let me get here, is Mr. Brad Lenson, speaking of American Two Fifty N C. Thank you for coming, sir. Come up to the podium right up here, you timed it up and starting soon, you get started.
I'd like to distribute materials to all of you.
Yeah, go ahead and do that for yourself.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks for being with us. And I'm just assuming that this is our Two Hundred and Fifty birthday coming up, and that's what this is. And I kind of gather by, by your hat, that might be part of it. Thank you.
I'm going to be very brief, there's a lot more that could be said. Uh, I wanted each of you to be aware of the three pieces of paper which I've given you. The first is a map, and that's provided by the State Office for American Two Fifty N C. We are coming up on the Two Hundred and Fiftyth anniversary of the state. The state wants, and would like to have county committees for each of the counties in the state after the election, I mean, immediately prior to the election, thirty-three counties had opted in and passed the resolution for county work, you know, to form those committees. Since the election, it is now up to seventy-seven. And what I, the map that you had there, if, and you all can't see it, but if you look, I've given a little circle there, and Yancey is not yet there, even though we are the highest, in the highest county east of the Mississippi, et cetera, et cetera. You can see other counties that are here. One that just joined is Rutherford County, and you'll see a little line bar there, and then you'll see a little dot in Madison County, and they are working on it, and I hope that they will pass something no later than June, per the observations of the, you know, the chairperson. So I wanted you to be aware of this, the second sheet is, shows how simple the authorizing, uh, you know, document to be. There are eight lines in there, and there are counties that have put in their name, just like the template is written there, and passed it, and they were in. Now there are a couple more steps that are involved, and we need to make certain obviously that you're not indebted, you know, to the state and all sorts of other folks. Those counties that applied early enough, all got ten thousand, the thirty-three thousand before the election, each got ten thousand. That was unrestricted, and there was no match. You all need to have assurances that if, and I hope that you do, go forward with this, uh, you know, that it works for you. Uh, and it doesn't have to be extremely complicated. Some counties have designated their TDA to be responsible for it, some have given to their project managers, and then at least one county, the county manager took it on for herself. So I, I don't know what my time is, but I don't, I definitely don't want to go over it. Uh, you're not going to pass this night, you shouldn't.
Right.
But if you would consider putting it on your agenda for your next month's meeting, then questions that you may have could be resolved, and of course, you could table it then or vote it down, but that, that was what I wished to bring to you tonight. Thank you very much.
I'm on cue at two fifty-two.
Very good.
Thank, thank you, uh, we appreciate that, Brad.
It's Brian, by the way.
Okay.
Just for the record.
Got it.
I know you're hurting me on pretty sharp, so I'm going to make sure.
Oh, yeah, trust me, trust me, I get, uh, corrected all the time. Don't worry. We'll check you then. I know she said nothing. All right, next on the public comments, Bob Wilkinson, Tech Resources, speaking on tech. Thanks for coming, Bob.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Bob Wilkinson. My wife and I moved to Burnsville from Michigan five years ago. We chose Burnsville after looking around the area for several years. We really love the people, the resources, and the natural beauty of the area. I was a middle school teacher for five years, a high school assistant principal for six years, a middle school principal for twenty years, and director for nine years over a career education in four school districts, high school and middle school student curriculum, alternative education, community education, and adult education. Um, we were cutting back quite a bit in my school district, and if you survived, you took on more and more responsibility. I also served as technology director supervising the district technology staff and the district librarians, who also served as building technology coordinators. Before we moved to Burnsville, we checked out local services and businesses, as we really wanted to move to a smaller town that also provided access to multiple personal needs and comforts. Well, we don't mind traveling to Asheville, we really prefer to shop local. One of the positives was the local library, that was part of the regional library system. I have been an avid library user since my childhood in Connecticut, and then again in Saginaw, Ann Arbor, Ipsilanti, and Bill, Bill, Michigan. All had wonderful libraries, but we were really pleased and impressed with all the services offered here in Burnsville. You should be well aware of those, as several people have spoken about them in the past year. Many of those services, as you should know, will no longer be available if you withdraw from the regional system. I personally love the Libby Network, which allows me to borrow books on Kindle, where I can control front size and background color, as my seventy-five-year-old eyes need those accommodations. More importantly, I'm totally disappointed and frustrated that you would take so many services away from our local citizens. I do not understand your reasons for giving up so much, but do know that you have not satisfactorily explained those reasons to our community. It really appears extremely petty to me. My educational and personal background have helped me gain a solid understanding of what good and great libraries should offer. We have a great library here, and you seem to have, excuse me, you seem to have no hesitation to slash and burn until we are left with fewer and less effective services. I implore you to reconsider your decision to leave the regional library and to do the right thing by remaining a member. The citizens of this area certainly deserve that. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Rob. Next on the, uh, public comments is Gordia Robinson, uh, and speaking on growing up and stuff. Thanks for coming, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, I'm kind of short, but I'm kind of by you.
We're here.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Gordia Robbins, I'm in South Dakota. Community, the second of ten kids. My family has been here for generations. I would like to talk to you about the Bookmobile and the Aggie Library. The Bookmobile was my lifeline growing up. Books allowed me to dream, to travel, to hope. And I'm not the only one. A lot of people in Yancey County, for whatever reason, depend on the library and the Bookmobile to travel, to use their imagination, to socialize, and many activities of daily living. Please do not rip apart our library, something that is not broken, when we have so much devastation around us that needs fixing. If the last six months has taught us anything, it's that we're stronger together than when we are alone. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Gordia. Uh, next speaker is Beth Wilkinson, speaking on, um, local history, teachers, and diversity. Thanks for coming, Beth.
Thank you. I thought I should, oh, I can't get out of here. I thought I should tell you who I am, because I am related to thousands of people in your area. My maiden name is Beth Ramsey, and I live with my husband, Bob Clay, but I have an extensive Ramsey family history, and most have settled in the area of western North Carolina and east Tennessee over the last couple hundred years, and I should be the man with the hat. Two of those walkalikes ancestors in Nancy and Addison were Jean-Gerat Ramsey and Melinda Holcomb residing here in the early eighteen hundreds. Melinda's father was Nick Holcomb, who was buried in Nancy in eighteen thirty-five. Those are my ancestors. I'm a retired elementary and special ed teacher consultant. I earned my master's degree from Wayman Mary, and I loved teaching for over thirty years, with a mission to teach and support children. After locating a year in twenty twenty, we found a lovely place in the neighborhood and appreciated our friendly neighbors. I discovered the Yancey Library, and I was pleased to see engaging and colorful brochures about the area that visually welcomed us. It was reminiscent of encouraging my students of all backgrounds to be included in a warm and safe environment. In twenty twenty-two, I had a stroke that had an impact on communication. But more importantly, for many of us, we had significant losses in our families in the last few years. We were then shocked to find such conflict and confusion in our community concerning the library. It was alarming for me, for personal reasons. The stroke has affected memory as well as my ability to read and comprehend. For over a year, I had to read aloud with my husband, discuss and learn to read with comprehension again. Now I must read nonfiction and information as much as possible, just like when I taught my schoolchildren. Because we have been part of the AME Regional Library, so many resources have been more available to my ongoing learning process. available to my ongoing learning process. Every time I receive a non-book, nonfiction book from Yancey, or a different library, I feel blessed to understand... Sorry. Hopefully remember more. Sorry. Memory stinks. A new book, a nature drawing, was sent from McDowell County in Marion to my email in Yancey. What a gift that is. I requested another excellent wildlife book that arrived from a different library in the Amy system. We offered Perot Timbus Williams as an expert, not only on plants and animals in Utah, but also on the deaths of women with breast cancer due to the effects of nuclear bomb testing in Nevada and Utah in the 1950s and 1600s. Who reads what I read? But in Yancey County, not everyone wants to read about familial cancer or wildlife drawn, but I do. I have tried to improve and read as much factual information as I can from every county I can reach. I cannot imagine my life without the educational resources that I have received from the Yancey Library and the Amy Library System. At 75 years old, I believe that everyone deserves accessibility to what we need and be able to read.
Next speaker is Ms. Krista Banks, and it's Kinnaird.
Kinnaird.
Okay. So thanks for coming, appreciate you being here. Speaking about honoring my nanny Ruth Banks.
It's been a while since I've seen a lot of you, what the title is, darling, you're talking about a twin. Can you hear me?
No.
It's been over 30 years since I've seen many of you, to some of my classmates, it's truly good to see you, and to others, I'm not here to pretend. When you live our, when you live in your hometown and spend decades elsewhere, you gained something many people never do, perspective, humility, and the courage to speak truth, even when it, even when it's uncomfortable, and I am uncomfortable. I've seen power used to punish, not to serve. I've seen people shut up and shamed, not protected. That's not leadership, that's not faith, and that's not our community. To the commissioners, you work for all of us, and not just the people you who think like you. You are not elected to impose your personal religious beliefs on the whole community, that is not your role. That role belongs to me. As mother, it's my job to teach my children about right and wrong, about love, compassion, and how to treat people with dignity, respect, and grace. I want to tell you about the woman whose name is etched outside that library. My nanny, Ruth Banks. She served this county for 40 years, and when my daughters saw her name, they were so proud. They felt connected to something meaningful, to service, to legacy, to this most, to the most important things a person could do. She believed deeply in compassion, in public service, and living by a strong moral compass. Not one that shamed, but one that guides, not one that defies, but one that unites. And I believe she would be heartbroken to see what's happening now, turning a place meant to serve everyone, the library, into a political weapon, targeting the poor, silencing the vulnerable. Let me remind you, after Hurricane Elaine, our town was devastated, but we didn't ask who someone voted for, what church they went to, or who they loved, we helped each other. And the Amy Library stood tall. It became a beacon, a lifeline, for those without power, internet connection, especially the poor, who still today rely on that building for access to the world. It is not just a place to read books, it is a refuge, a safe space, a source of dignity in a community, where not everyone has it at home.
Three minutes, Krista.
Let me finish, please. My, my grandmother won't, won't let me do.
You got, you got three minutes, Tom.
I'm finishing. You're not protecting our children, you're grilling them in their safe places, you, you're not preserving our values, you're violating our heritage, and you're not hurting me, and you're certainly not hurting my children, because I'm, I'm their mother, not you, and thank God for that. But you are dividing this community, you are harming the very, very people, my grandmother's grandmother's parents.
Thank you, Krista.
I did not mean that harm with hate, I was meaning with grief, with grief.
Boo! 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 We really appreciate the respect, Tom, thank you for that. So next, we have, our next speaker is Carol Belitely, Resources for Kids Post-Laboratory. Thank you for coming, Carol.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So I'm speaking to you as a parent of a young child, my daughter is three, and we live on western side of the county near Kane River, and so before Kane, you know, there were two bigger places to go, were Kane River Park and the library, very active kid, gotta keep her moving, and obviously we lost Kane River Park, and that's not anybody's fault, there's nothing that could have been done about that, uh, but it's a real loss for the kids of our community, especially in our corner of the county, so to us, that makes the library even more important right now. Uh, and I wanted to say thank you so much for, um, replacing the Kid Mountain Playground that's over there by the library. We go every Thursday to the library, and my daughter has been watching it with so much excitement, seeing it, getting ready, um, so thank you for all the work that's been done for that. But I am so concerned about what this might mean for the kids of our county with the withdrawal from the regional system. I don't understand why we would be taking a risk of something that might give, you know, more loss and more upheaval to the kids of our county who have been through so much. Our family is not that affected compared to so many other families, you know, our house was okay, and even so, it's been so much upheaval, um, so it just doesn't feel like it's time to take a risk to me. Uh, I know it sounds like a lot of work has been done to preserve the books and to preserve everything that's in the building, but I'm sure you all understand that a library is a lot more than a building with books in it. Um, and to us, the librarians, the relationship that my daughter has with the librarians, that all the people in our family have with them, that's such a critical part of the library for us, and all the kids' services. It's my understanding that you will lose a children's librarian and much of the children's programming. So again, for kids who have lost so much, um, it, that's upsetting to me, um, we want to make sure that we're preserving as many resources for the kids of this county as we possibly can, so as you consider this action that you're taking, as you continue to think about it, I ask you to think about it through the eyes of the three-year-olds of this county and all the other young kids. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Next speaker is Ms. Allison Hadenfelder, and also speaking by the Amy Library. Thanks for coming, Allison.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here because I'm a homeschooling mother, and I also am a co-lead of the Full Steam Ahead Carolinas, um, nonprofit, that is, um, the leaders of the Yancey Robotics Award-Winning Robotics Team. And we could not survive without that library system, and as a homeschooler and as a nonprofit, we have relied on the, um, the library system to help us out. So I cannot believe what is happening to eat this evening, and that the decision has already seemingly been made. Um, a pride display, something our library had been doing quietly, respectfully, for eight years, somehow one person has sparked a debate that had total upheaval of our library system. A single display that was celebrating inclusion became an excuse to dismantle decades of regional cooperation. Without input and without a plan, and without a replacement for the services that Amy provides, you are creating chaos. You say we'll be able to find the funding to stay the same, and that we as a, but we as a community are hearing rumors that perhaps it's costing too much, or it's, you know, you have not found that funding yet. I did not feel any confidence this evening with what you presented to the community, okay? You said, okay, that we, I mean, we have gotten used to a library system that provides tech support, provides services, provides books, provides community, okay? You said this evening that you are going to try and continue with the Bookmobile, but we're going to remain with the Amy Library System for that. If we have to remain with the Amy Library System for that, why are we leaving? Okay?
Yeah.
You say we're going to stay the same, but the funding isn't there, at least from what I heard this evening, okay? The funding is not there from what I hear this evening, and you almost, as an afterthought, said, "We're going to grow," I mean, like an afterthought, that the library is going to grow. The library was not broken. The library was not broken. You broke it.
Yeah.
This is not a risk worth taking, especially right now, when we need these taxpayer funds to help our community members with Pelleen Recovery. So, please, you owe it to this community to reconsider this decision, because we are stronger together.
Next is Ms. Jackie Moss, and Jackie's speaking about local businesses in Burnsville. Thanks for coming, Jackie.
You're welcome, thanks for saying my name. I thought I was every time, but anyone. I changed myself, can't blame you. Homeplace and Burke Foot are the perfect destinations in Burnsville if you like beer, Carriage House or Pig and Grits if you love to eat out, or Ingalls if you need groceries. Kane River Park used to be the best place if your kid played sports, and of course, the square is perfect if you fancy a sunny afternoon in town. As a senior on a fixed income and an avid reader, my perfect destination in Burnsville has been the library, and when I say perfect, that's exactly what I mean. I have, and I'll leave it on the table for you, a list of about 100 books, which is about half the books I've taken out of the library in the past two years and read. All of them from the Burnsville branch of the Amy, Amy Regional Library. The library has been consistently welcoming, the librarians have been uniformly helpful, and the cardinal system has worked efficiently. I'm an eclectic reader, which means I read fiction and nonfiction, new releases and classics, prose and poetry, genres from history and politics to crime, fantasy, and romance. The collection built and curated through the support of Amy and the experienced leadership of Wayne and other library staff has surprised and delighted me. They have created a small-town library that is equal to the depth and breadth of a much larger city. I'm just not sure that you understand and appreciate how perfect Burnsville Library currently is. I think that if you did, if you could open your ears and your minds to what you hear tonight and every meeting, you would not for one moment consider withdrawing from Amy and attempt to maintain that level of quality with less money and less experienced librarians. This council apparently seized upon one complaint from a single citizen related to a Pride Month display, and is using that person's apparent intolerance as a springboard to pursue an apparently partisan agenda. I say apparently because so much of this process has been conducted behind closed doors.
Yep. Yes.
And a flood of unanswered questions off the record and in after its statements, and gaslit denials of what is happening in plain sight. This attempt to withdraw Yancey County from Amy is apparently nothing more than an effort to deny access to information and education, and in authoritarian speak, that's the beginning of thought control. And as a lover of books and a taxpayer citizen of Yancey County, I say, "No, thank you. I want my county council, and you are here to support me as well as the other people that voted for you, I want you to support the free exchange of ideas for all citizens to help Yancey County become an even better and stronger county, not an ignorant backwater." And if I have 10 seconds left, if you had presented...
Go ahead, go ahead.
If you had presented...
I'll get your freaking fly mask, go ahead.
Okay, okay. If you had presented the downsides and the negatives, as well as the positives, taken off those rose-colored glasses and been truthful, you would have had a lot more credibility in this meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.
Next speaker is Ms. Kathy Waspel. I saw her up there. We've been looking at the county budget, Kathy.
Silence.
Thanks for coming, Kathy.
So I'm disappointed in, disappointed in what we heard tonight, there was so much that was left out, and I'm worried about the county budget. You didn't include the salaries for free employees, you didn't include anything with the children's librarian, um, the federal government has cut the agency, which provides money to state libraries, so that's money that you won't have. FEMA has been cutting, um, money to the states, Josh Stein just got turned down for a lot of the money that he was hoping to get for FEMA rebuilding. At the last meeting, when that auditor came, um, you were talking about how you started projects, but you haven't gotten the money yet. I'm concerned that those grants might be cut because the state and the federal government are cutting so much. So I'm just, I feel like you just gave us a partial budget, and I really don't know how you're going to sustain library and what programs will be cut. And as others have said, you've never really explained why this is in our best interest.
Yeah.
Because you've never told us, and shame on you.
Yeah.
Next is Mr. Ed Pickery, Chief Cares.
Yeah.
Okay, that's going to be part of our process, all right? Thank you for that. Uh, next is Ms. Ingrid Ringler, Transparency. Is she here?
You know I'm here, we saw each other.
I was looking for you.
Hi.
Thanks for coming.
So, in the interests of transparency, I didn't prepare any remarks before this, I've just been scribbling in back there, uh, because I wanted to hear what you guys had to say before I figured out what I wanted to say in response. I wanted to hear the explanations you have not offered since making the decision to withdraw from the library. I wanted to hear the budget you've been saying you have had since last summer. I wanted to hear you have been listening to your constituents who have been extremely vocal on this issue. Y'all knew I was going to talk about the library, but I want to be clear that the concerns that I have are not limited to the library. We've had similar concerns about transparency with tax adjustments last fall, and it makes me question the withdrawal of the Health Department from the regional partnership there. I appreciate what detail Lynn was able to present this evening, I don't think it's enough. I would like to see the complete budget, failing that, I want to see the shell budget that she mentioned. I hope that that will be available to us later this month. I don't think that being able to see those is unreasonable for an issue as hot as this one. I want to know how long the proposed partnership around the Bookmobile is supposed to be for, and why, I want to know why that partnership... and I want to know why that partnership is okay, but not a full partnership with the rest of the library. What is your plan for access to the digital materials that I've spoken before about meeting when I go on a work trip? Will there be any effect on the library's business hours? I can already only, in theory, access the library after work on two weekdays and Saturday morning. Commissioners, I hate to say it, but I don't like getting up early on the weekend. I keep missing my interlibrary load pickups. I want to know how long the startup status that you mentioned the library would have, how long is that going to last? I want to know the other county that you mentioned was thinking about pulling out of the system. What county is that? What relationship do we have to them that we're suddenly helping them out with this when we're not helping out our neighbors? This is genuine to talk about the regional library systems being a minority when they are inherently groups of counties. They're always going to be a minority because they represent more than the single regional system that we discussed when we talk about a regional system. If you look at a map, you can see that the systems that are in a regional library are a significant portion of the counties in North Carolina. It's been more than nine months since you made this decision. That's long enough to make a baby. It ought to be long enough for you to have ready answers to all of these questions. You should be able to offer us comparative statistics on all the improvements that should have been made to our Health Department when we pulled out of that regional partnership. I cannot still be getting my, can I finish this paragraph?
Just that paragraph.
Thank you. I should not still be getting my information only from your opposition, but if you don't have answers, I encourage you to join the meetings every other Saturday. There's a lot of information there. You could learn something, maybe if it's just what it is you need to teach us instead of offering the same platitudes about how nothing's going to change.
As usual. So you're up, Danny, whenever you're ready.
I was a young man when we celebrated the Bicentennial. We could invest money in a passbook savings account down at the Northwestern Bank at five and a quarter percent. Instead, I chose to say Bicentennial quarter and $2 each. They should be worth $32 each and $256 each, and I've got a supply for anybody. I wanted to read a list here from Amanda James Keen. What they've done for this community is incredible. Here in Amy. Three and a half years, two historic buildings, twenty-seven guest rooms, thirty-four bathrooms, ten thousand feet of wire, three hundred and forty circuit breakers, four tons of steel, three thousand plumbing fixtures, thirteen heating ventilation and air-conditioning systems, a hundred and thirteen historic buildings, two commercial kitchens, four bars, a very large stove, fifty staff hours of growing, one bag of bones, and one natural disaster. And that has been through it all. That's just amazing. And now May is the grand opening month of the New Raisin' Old Town. May the first or the third, if you want to get free tour, open house, come by and see what they've done, and a kid's grand old school with the turkeys alive. And I think that they are to be remembered for what they have done. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate everybody coming. Thank you for being here. I appreciate and respect your comments and opinions on the governing matters of Yancey County. We'll be back again next Monday, or next month, on the second Monday at six o'clock. I'd love to see you here. Now we're going to go into closed session as a pursuit of our Amy Regent, who are your motion to go in closing. A motion very simple. Second, I was afraid to. Thank you all for coming. See you next month.